With that, I'd like to call this regular meeting of the Board of Education to order. The next regular Board of Education meeting is on Tuesday, September 10th at 7:30 PM in the Board Meeting Room. I'll move immediately to the Chair's person's report. I'd like to wish, hope that everyone had a wonderful summer and wish everyone a very happy and successful school year. We are very excited to be kicking off the school year this year here. We're excited about a lot of things. We're excited about our personal device initiative. That will start three days into the school year. We'll give everybody three days to get the message out, hear what's happening, and then it will begin to be enforced. We'll be talking about it again in October. We'll be talking about the high school and we'll be reviewing how well it's going for the elementary and the middle school at that time. So please keep the phone lines open, keep yourself, talk to your administrators, keep everybody talking, because it's really important that this be successful. We are very committed to the educational and social impact of devices on our students and the staff who manage them during the day. If you're a parent who is concerned about kids with devices, also feel free to keep them at home. We are, these are all, these are all choices. And so we recognize that many people need them, but if you don't, feel free to keep them at home to give us a little support. We have a couple of important items on tonight's agenda. In particular, we'll be taking a look at the second draft of our board and district goals for the year. This is how we define what we do. It's some of our most critical work, and we're really excited to be talking about it again this evening. We also have a memo tonight where we're taking a look at some athletic concepts. Before I jump over to talking a little bit more about that, I want to also say that I had the pleasure of attending convocation. It was fascinating. We had a wonderful time. Futures, I felt that there were a lot of very engaged teachers. We have a very interesting presentation on AI, which of course is changing everything we know about how we're going to learn eventually, how we're going to teach, and certainly how we're going to work. Mr. Seany and I were having a conversation about ChatGPT. We were talking about budgeting, and he said, I wonder how ChatGPT defines it. And what John turned up, and to be fair, I've changed a few of the words around, but "One of the major functions of the BOE is budgeting. School budgeting refers to the process by which educational institutions plan and manage their financial resources for a specific period, usually a fiscal year. The budget outlines how funds will be allocated to various areas such as salaries, facilities, educational programs, technologies, supplies, and other operational costs. School budgeting is typically done by school administrators, often with input from teachers, parents, and sometimes students. It is then reviewed and approved by a governing body such as a school board like ourselves, and of course in Darien, then it goes through the Board of Finance and then the RTM. The goal is to ensure that the school can meet the needs of students first and foremost, to provide quality education and to operate efficiently while staying within fiscal constraints." So I think it's really important to, as we all kick off this school year, also remind ourselves of what we do and why we do it. Part of why we are talking tonight about RC 11 or the Athletics RC is we asked ourselves the question at the end of last year, in part of our own accord and in part because costs are up and therefore the cost per student is up, and in part because we had an ongoing dialogue with the Board of Finance in which we were appropriated less money than we originally asked for. So we said to ourselves, we've got an RC with costs that are increasing at a higher rate than the rest of our budget. Are there different questions we need to ask? Is there something we can be doing more creatively? What do we need to do? So I think it's important for us to review why we'd ask that. And I think it's important, particularly if there's any students or parents of athletes who are listening, to understand that first and foremost, that first piece of what I said is that we're looking to meet the needs of students. That includes providing robust extracurricular activities. There is no one on this board that asks the question, how can we cut sports? What we asked is how can we be more creative? Are there other things other districts are doing that would enable us to provide the same opportunities that we've been providing, or maybe even more? The second thing we want to do is provide quality education. In order to provide the level of quality education that we provide today, we will continue to have to ask ourselves, what do we need to do? How can we be more creative? We're really proud of some of the things that we had to do with end of last year. We took a look at allocating middle school teachers and finished implementing or finished implementing most of a contract. We took a look at finishing the implementation of our new, of some of the new languages and how that impacted other language delivery. We took a look at our campus monitors. We took a look at insourcing and outsourcing and figured out what to bring in-house so that we wouldn't pay additional fees to contractors and what to leave in a contractor model. Because of that third piece, operational efficiency, which is what all of our taxpayers expect of us, that we do this as well as we can on all three of those tranches. The last piece that I want to talk about in that ChatGPT section is the piece on engagement, where it talks about how do we make these budgetary decisions? It's done by school administrators, often with input from teachers, parents, and sometimes students, and of course, the board. This board stands behind the fact that we welcome the voice of teachers, parents, and students. And so we hope that as we start this new school year, as we begin this journey, whether we're talking about technology, whether we're talking about new curricular initiatives, whether we're talking about how we budget and what we pay for, that all of you will stay engaged with us, will walk with us, will understand that we may not always agree, but we're here for the conversation. Call us, email us, come up here to the dais. I've done it. Please join us, but please know underneath it all, we are here for the students and we're here for them every day. And I hope if you are a student and listening, you walk into school tomorrow knowing we're here for you, we believe in you, we're so excited about the programs we offer you, and nobody's looking to take anything away from you. We're looking to build you up and the programs that serve you. With that, I will turn it over to the, to public comment.
Good evening. If anyone in person would like to participate in public comment, please come up to the podium and wait for the chair to recognize you. Please state your name and address for the record, and you will have up to three minutes to comment. Please note the time with the chair.
Good evening. My name is Beth Lane. I live at 16 Hillcrest Avenue, and I will say a disclaimer, even though I am DHSPA co-chair and I'm on the Finance and Budget Committee of the RTM, I am speaking my personal opinion and I am not representing any other entities in this moment. Looking over the RC 11, all the different ways you could slice and dice it, I just, I know I've been saying this for eight years now, but I just want to emphasize again that I think if we could move towards a system that's more equitable than the current athletic fund allocation system, that would be a benefit. Some of these things would move us in that direction, and some of them would actually move us farther away so that there are some teams that are sort of the anointed teams and then other teams that are secondary. And it would be better if we could try and move towards all of the teams being sort of equally represented in the athletic budget, rather than like hockey players pay for their own helmets, football players get their helmet, all that sort of thing. Be great if we could move in that direction so that it's more equitable. That's it. Thank you.
Thank you, Beth.
If anyone else in person would like to participate, please approach the podium. If anyone online would like to participate, please use the raised hand icon. We have no raised hands at this time.
Okay. With that, I'll move to the superintendent's report.
Well, welcome back, everybody. It's great to see you and.
Sorry, Jill and Alan, there are a couple of raised hands on Zoom. I don't know that you can see them.
Oh, they came.
They just came in. Okay, great. Thank you, Sarah, for noticing that.
Thank you.
I'll pause.
Sorry about that. Ms. McCray, you've been recognized. Please state your name and address for the record, and you, please note you have three minutes to speak. Ms. McCray?
Sorry, a little technically challenged. Good evening, members of the board and Dr. Adley. My name is Ailee McCray. I reside at 69 Sedgwick Avenue. I stand before you today to discuss a matter of significant importance regarding not only just my daughter, but the future of the high school orchestra program, specifically the structure of honors music and the chamber orchestra. My concern revolves around how the current scheduling conflicts and limitations of limited spaces within a chamber orchestra are impeding students' academic and musical potential. This year, we faced a notable issue when there was only one cello chair available in the chamber orchestra. When my daughter encountered a scheduling conflict between the concert orchestra and Mandarin for honors, I raised the issue before the summer and requested the addition of an extra chair in chamber orchestra. Despite being informed by Ms. Minnis that her level was not an issue, that she would be fine in an honors class, she would be first on the waitlist. Ms. Thompson also confirmed this when I had a meeting with her at the start of the summer. But unfortunately, last week, the class was deemed as full, and there is apparently a long waitlist. The nature of the chamber orchestra has been compared to a varsity sport, that it is small by nature and very specialized. However, if my daughter is of a level, why is this not being facilitated for her? The situation has highlighted a larger systematic problem. In discussion with Ms. Minnis and Mrs. Thompson, I emphasized my perspective as a professional musician. I've worked all over the world with orchestras and the necessity of a flexible system that accommodates the programs we are building and the students at the appropriate level, allowing them to continue their musical pathways and passions. I also underscored the vital role of a full string orchestra class not being offered part-time, one lesson every eight days, and then joining for performances for 0.025 credits for a whole year of commitment. The social and emotional well-being of this class has been a crucial element of my daughter's experience in high school. She has made many friendships, and it has offered a balance within her academic schedule, and it was fostered within her other classes. The current structure seems inadequate if there is a long waitlist for cello spots when considering that five elementary schools feed into middle school and then into high school.
Ms. McCray.
The fact that this year, only one student, only one student could join the honors program shows a lack of flexibility and restricts students from maximizing their GPA and credit potential, and we talk all the time.
Thank you. You're at time.
Okay. Thank you so much.
Thank you. We do have another period at the end if you'd like to finish your remarks.
Ms. McNamara, you have been recognized. Please note that you need to state your name and address for the record. You will have up to three minutes to speak and note the time with the chair, please.
Absolutely. Thank you very much. Krista McNamara, 69 St. Nicholas Road. I am here also to echo the comments that you heard from the first public speaker regarding your agenda item on RC 11. I am very familiar with this topic. I ask also that in future agendas, it's more transparent and listed as the athletic budget to help the communication and the information as it's spread to the parent community, to work with you as a partner in this dialogue. I am concerned with some of the, I will say, proposals or items that were mentioned in that memo. I would echo, I am concerned that they moved the district to a less equitable athletic experience for our students by, for example, dissecting the, or separating the SEAC versus non-SEAC sports. I know that's one of many options that has been presented to you. I find that most disconcerting. I'm also concerned about the funding and how it is spread across the respective sports. As mentioned before, yes, I have struggled to understand why protective equipment is supplied for some contact sports and not other contact sports. I am concerned, surprised, and confused as to why some off-site sports are paying 30% for their facilities where other sports do not. There is no pool at Darien High School campus, yet as I understand from your own budget documents, that the $6,323 dive fee for women's, for girls and boys diving is assumed by the district. I just ask that as you pursue this topic, which I do think is worthwhile, that you look to bring more equity across all your sports as opposed to dividing it between more haves and have-nots. Thank you so much for your time and for this work you're doing.
Thank you, Krista.
If anyone else online would like to participate in public comment, please use the raised hand icon. We have no raised hands at this time.
Okay. Okay. Just give it a second. Okay. Take it away, Alan.
Well, we're back. Good evening, everybody. It's nice to see you, people in person and community members online. Thank you for your participation, and it's a wonderful experience the night before, and it's a wonderful time of the year is true. If you haven't been a teacher or you haven't had the opportunity to teach or otherwise, there is a strange physiological condition that comes along with this time of the year, and it's just a very special time of the year filled with hopes and anticipation. I expect around Darien that the kids are filling their book bags tonight, or parents are filling it for them. And by the way, I'm talking about a kindergarten or a senior, right? Anywhere in between. They're laying out their clothes, whether you're 16 or six for tomorrow, and they pack their bags with the hopes and dreams of a productive school year. I'm just sure with you that our staff, our schools are ready. Thanks to Kevin and his crew, and our staff is ready to receive your children, to care for them, and to inspire them. The theme for the year, Convocation, was a whole new world and a whole new year, and the whole new year gives everybody an opportunity to experience success. So you'll be pleased to put the kids on the bus tomorrow or drive them or drop them off, and we will be pleased to receive them. I just want to mention, actually Jeff's in there, and he's, just, he doesn't get a wee shout-out all the time, but for convocation and everything that he does, and also Andy, is Andy in there? Andy has done a fabulous job. I just want to recognize those people if you don't mind just. So Annika is at Yale somewhere, probably at this particular, Annika Mengele, who was a senior presidential scholar, graduate of the school. And I just want to mention that, can you put those things up here?
Jeff needs to do it.
Can I just put those up so people can see it, please?
I'll tell. They're here.
Just give it, can you see that back?
We can keep them there.
Anyway, Annika did the logo for the school, for the school district. I'm going to share, I'm going to put on a site, on the website, the background of this because it is unbelievable. It goes from colors to back, sort of storyline. These are the logos that she developed for the school district. The top represents obviously the school district itself, and if you sort of want to get a wee sense of, if you don't mind, I'll just talk about it just for a second. There are seven sort of sides to that. The two bottom curves are the two secondary schools that uphold the five elementary schools with the straight lines across the top. The tree, a tree of knowledge, a tree of life, just sort of representative of our forestry and our topography of the land in Darien. The waves are the blue wave spirit that borrowed from the high school, but it represents the spirit of the district and the student body. And also, we are very much a beach community. The roots of the tree represent all the attributes of the portrait of the graduate, and they sort of bring your eye up to the tree itself. The tree itself represents, they mentioned the tree of, tree of knowledge essentially. I like to think it's a given tree too, in kindness, but that's okay. But the trunk represents the district, the two boughs represent the two secondary schools. And if you look at those two boughs, you'll see that there's five branches that come off that. Those are the five elementary schools. The two, the Darien High School was just slightly modified, and the middle school was just slightly modified. And you can see it, there's, the bottom symbols represent the elementary schools, and they're sort of Harry Potter-like a little bit, but there's a wee academia there too, in terms of the shields. She just did an absolutely fabulous job for the district. These are being shared district-wide, being used district-wide, it'll be our new letterhead, so on and so forth. It doesn't take away any other things that people are doing in terms of spirit wear or otherwise. But she just did an absolutely phenomenal job. I will share the full documentation because I think it's worth, you're just looking at to understand the depths of what she's done. So, and with that, we thank Annika, wherever she is, and we wish her well and much success, and I'm sure that she will experience that. Summer was very busy with curriculum work, facilities. Thank you, Kevin. Kevin will talk tonight, but particularly working around HHR, the facilities, and a maintenance department just did a phenomenal job and have done a phenomenal job getting the schools ready. We had successful programs over the summer. These included Aladdin and Suzical. These were our theater programs. We had the all-staff convocation, which we rolled out the video wall. If you haven't seen this video wall, this thing is something else. There will be a ribbon cutting, formal ribbon cutting on September 10th with the foundation, Darien Foundation. That's just absolutely unbelievable, and it will get tremendous use. We've had three days of orientation for our new staff. We have about 40 new staff. That includes the new administration, and we have had three full days of professional learning, a fourth today for people to get ready in their classrooms. All general education positions are filled, and Marge will give you a wee bit of an update on the details of general education, special education a wee bit later. We have communicated our cell phone policy broadly and widely, and we'll continue to do that. The feedback has been well received. I've been asking the community to join us in a partnership, and the response thus far has been very positive. Believe it or not, the open houses are around the corner. They start at September 12th. They're on the website. I won't go through them all. Just a wee note, if you're expecting, the elementary conferences are in October. That was the new conferences that we passed on the calendar, and they will be early release days for students. But we're looking forward to tomorrow, first day of school. Thank you.
Thank you, Alan. Lot to celebrate there. Approval of the minutes. Okay. May I have a motion to approve the following? Minutes of the special meeting held on July 23rd, 2024, and minutes of the special meeting held on August 12th, 2024. That is Julie, seconded by Dennis. All those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you, Dave. So that's unanimous. Board committee reports. I don't know that we have any because we've been away for the summer, away from committees. Alan's already given you an update on HHR, and we've sent you some documentation around. If you guys didn't have a chance to look at the, the little, I guess they're pamphlets provided by our staff that are for the students, please do that. They're really touching and a really fun way of looking at construction for students. So they're looking at not only what's happening, but also what are the machines that we're using and why are we using those machines and who are the people? And hopefully they'll get the students engaged. Any committee reports I'm missing, just in case? Okay. With that, speaking of HHR, I'll turn it to Kevin. And of course, Alan has said thank you, but certainly the board extends great thank yous to you and your staff as well. It's been quite a summer.
It has. You actually stole my introduction.
Oh.
On a typical summer, the facilities department is very busy and chaotic and oftentimes insane place to be. This year's probably stole the cake.
You're welcome.
Renovating and demolishing three elementary schools all at the same time is a very ambitious project, and it definitely threw us a number of curveballs that we were able to hit thankfully. So in addition to not only that tremendous project that we're undertaking, we had our regular capital projects, which have all been either completed or partially completed as of when I wrote the memo. The remainder will be addressed this fall and into the winter semester, namely the second phase of the high school theater project. The memo outlines, you know, a number of the highlight key projects that we undertook, but what it doesn't take into account is all the hundreds of hours and work orders and routine and mundane things that our team handles day in and day out. And I always like to take a moment and thank those folks on the custodial maintenance and grounds team, because without them, our schools wouldn't be looking the way they do for tomorrow morning. So with that, I'll take any questions that you might have.
Good. Does anybody have questions about the memo? Julie?
Thank you. I can't imagine what a summer you all had. Thank you. Just real quick, and you might have just said it, and I may have missed it. Anything in here that was scheduled to happen from when you wrote the memo till now, all those things, I assume?
Right. So one, one update is for the Oxridge Solar. Originally, we thought the commissioning process would be done this past week. We've actually been delayed a week just due to some paperwork, but we did get the clear from Eversource to start using the solar panels on Oxridge. You're welcome.
Any other questions on summer work? It's very helpful to have this, Kevin. We haven't always done this, and we do so much facilities work over the summer. It's really helpful to see it come to completion. So thank you to you and your team for on top of preparing for all of this plus school opening, for also doing this for us.
You're very welcome. Not a problem.
All right. With that.
Madam Chair, that, he also talked about the buses being ready and so on. I just want to make sure that actually everybody along this side of the desk here who's contributed to the start of school from our transportation, taking over special education transportation, we're ready to go ahead, the platform running, business office, hiring, everybody. Really contributed to a smooth, smooth open thus far. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. Update on enrollment, Rich?
So there are not many significant changes since we updated the board on July 23rd. Overall, enrollment fell by four students since July 23rd. Elementary schools lost two students, the middle school gained two students, and the high school lost four students. The main change really was in kindergarten.
Sorry, what was the last thing?
The main change was in kindergarten, where there were five students lost.
Any questions about this memo? Julie?
Thank you. So Henley Kindergarten is closed, but we're locked now on our, on our sections, right? So that stays where it is. And then the next time we look at enrollment, Rich, do we look at it at the October 22nd meeting when we talk about class sizes? Do we revisit this then?
That, and then the, whenever the first November meeting is, you'll get the updated enrollment forecast for next year plus the October 1 numbers.
That's great. And then, sorry, last quick one. In that October 22nd meeting, I'm assuming that'll be a chance for us to, to review how things are shaking out at Middlesex class size-wise and distribution. Okay. Figured this was a good time to ask that. Thank you.
Bring that up again when we're on the master agenda, please, just so we can mark it. Thanks. Robin? Oh, okay. Dave, then Robin.
Sorry. Did we get any color as to why these changes occurred? Did people move, relocate, or anything?
So in the kindergarten cases, sometimes it's a student that's essentially registered, but either the parent pulled them back or they decided to go to a private or parochial school, and then in some cases, we did have some move-outs.
Thanks.
Robin?
With Darien High School, the plus 22, I know, you know, some of those were in sophomore and junior grades. I mean, were those families that were moving to Darien?
So not in all instances. So our persistence ratios in those grades were slightly higher, and so our persistence ratios typically track anywhere between like 99.4 and 99.7%. In the case this year, they were actually much higher than that, and so we retained students that typically we wouldn't have.
Thank you. So they were higher than 99.4 to 99.7?
It doesn't seem like a big jump, but it does actually materialize in some. Sure. It doesn't seem like a big jump, but it does actually materialize in some.
Thank you.
Madam Chair.
Yes.
I, I'm just pointing out, uh, it was in the memo to you that, uh, we dropped between the last time we spoke, one student, uh, below fourth grade at Oxridge, which just, I'm just talking out loud here that, um, that would potentially say that you could reduce a section. We're not, we're not recommending to reduce a section given the timing and so on and so forth. Um, and actually I wouldn't necessarily reduce it anyway. Um, the same way as I, if, if we had added a student above it, we wouldn't necessarily add a teacher. All right. So I'm just, it works both ways. And I think this is best for the, the communities.
Okay. Any questions about that? Okay. Any other questions on the memo? Okay. Thank you, Rich, for this work. Discussion on June 20, uh, 2023, 2024 and year end financial report and possible action on proposed budget transfers. And Rich, also, when you present this, would you take a minute to talk about the fact that we don't usually do year end at this time, but that we are doing?
He skipped.
I skipped one?
Verbal update.
Oh, I did. I'm sorry, Marge. Verbal update on general and special education staffing for 2425.
So as Dr. Adley mentioned, we are fully staffed in general education despite a growing phenomenon of both certified and non-certified staff notifying us as late as last week that they were leaving. So, you know, when you're in the business of children, that's sort of a tough pill to swallow. Um, and the teachers' union knows how upsetting it is to all of us. Um, special education has been hit particularly hard with this. Um, so we currently have two speech and language pathologist positions opened, both of which had previously been filled, but people withdrew at the last minute. We have two occupational therapists positions open. Again, we had only one open last week and someone withdrew. And we have one special education teacher at Henley, again, which was filled and the person let us know a week or two ago. But, um, Mrs. Klein is going to update you on some good news where those openings are concerned.
Okay.
Which is actually good news. So we were able to really interview a highly qualified candidate for the special education position today. Um, and that is at Henley and Ross Cooper is looking into that. That was a very positive interview. We had two interviews with OT candidates, um, one yesterday and, well, one tomorrow. Uh, so we're feeling very positive about that as well. Uh, the speech and language pathologist, the one that is open is a district wide for an oral motor specialist. Um, we were not successful with that, so we're continuing to look. We won't fill that till we have the person to help offset contracted out services. And the other speech and language pathologist, we have a highly qualified candidate who hopefully will give us an answer tomorrow and we'll keep you posted.
Okay. And for any of those, if we don't fill them, if, if these, these optimistic predictions don't happen, what happens?
We'll go back to contracted services. We've kept our lines open with, um, our constellation who we do OT with. We've been ongoing with them as well. And for our speech and language pathologist, we work with one of our currently contracted providers also. So we've been in contact. They're helping to fill some short-term SLP positions right now.
Okay. Thank you. Any other questions about that? Sarah?
Sorry. Thanks. Um, Marge, can you, since we're concerned about turnover, having concern about turnover, can you speak to the number of general education hires you need to do, both teachers and, um, administrators? Just so we have a general sense of what it looked like for this year?
So, um, we had mu- many fewer people to hire this year. So we only had, it looks like 28 or 29 brand new, um, teaching positions. And last year we were, I think, up around 60 or, or 70. So, and, um, from the exit interviews this year, it really was a lot about a commute, a lot about places where they could bring, um, their children to school, those. And, and then of course there's Westchester and we know we're not competing with those salaries.
Okay. And administrators, how many did we end up hiring?
So administrators? Nine? But that's because some were promoted and, you know, there was a lot of movement and we had the two new positions.
How many did we hire in special education? I know some were, some are.
Teachers?
Both. Well, administrators. Both.
Yeah.
Well, there were two, two new SLP positions. So those are new that were approved by the board. Uh, for administrative positions, there was just the restructuring that we had. Our, um, middle school and high school chairpersons become 12-month program directors. Um, Scott McCarthy became K through 12. And there were, uh, of course the five OT positions that you offered for district, um, employees.
We also.
I also.
You go.
I'm sorry. There was one other. It's a contracted person. Our physical therapist, who we very much have worked with incredibly well over the last several years, took a position in a, in a, um, at CES. So we're looking for PT contracted positions. That's not a district position, but, um, we're searching for that as well.
Okay.
There were 12 certified staff members, teachers, psychologists and speech and language in addition to the three openings, additional openings that we have.
So a total of 15.
So on a positive note, if I can just show that also, we were able to successfully hire two qualified psychologists over at Henley. And we had filled the position at Tokenique with one psychologist as well.
Great.
So that is the upside.
Great. And did any of that have to do with the new initiative that you put into place, Marge? With psychol- how we were working with?
Yes, yes. Alicia Dannen and Scott McCarthy, they have become a great pipeline for us from that program. And we have two into, two interns and then another informal intern this year, which are all very promising. But two of them did come from the intern program.
Okay. Thank you. Okay. Other, other questions on this line, Adam? No. Okay. Uh, Rich, discussion on 2023, 24 and year end. And again, please explain that we're doing year end early.
Uh, so this is the unaudited, uh, financial report for fiscal year 24. Uh, we did end the year with a positive balance of $3,675. Uh, the general education RCs ended up with a positive $7,685. While the special education RCs, uh, ended up with a deficit of just over $4,000. Um, overall salaries, uh, did end up in the negative by $23,775. Uh, this was largely driven by an overage in curriculum writing, but some offsets by the new salary schedule for custodians, um, and some salary savings. Um, operating ended up in a positive $27,346, uh, primarily due to some small savings in various operating accounts such as supplies, books, dues, printing and materials. And then about a little over $5,000 in facility and security expenses. Um, fixed ended up a positive $19,562. Um, this was largely driven due to, uh, positive claims in dental insurance for about $9,000. And then our utilities were about $6,700 better than anticipated. Uh, equipment ended up positive by $766. And so we had some minor savings in science equipment, special education equipment and classroom equipment. Uh, revenue ended up short by $20,224. Uh, this was largely driven by excess costs. We did book the special appropriation that was approved for $181,250 against excess cost. And so that still ended up with a shortfall of just over $18,000. And then gate receipts were short by $4,000 and then Medicaid reimbursement by almost $1,000. Um, there are no transfers, uh, to report, but the year is closed.
What's the timeline on our $3,000? What's the plan there?
So, uh, the money goes back to the town. Um, it is from the last year's appropriation. And so right now, uh, the audit starts and well, it's actually already kind of started and they'll come on site in September. Um, there's an entry made on the town side to adjust, um, that revenue into their fund balance. But essentially that $3,600 goes back to the town.
Right. Any comments, questions? Okay. Dave, you good? I'll take it as a yes. Okay.
That's it.
All right. Thanks, Dave. Um, further discussion and possible action on board of education goals and strategic plan goals, strategies, actions for. I skipped again. Thank you. Quite a night. Discussion on efficiency-based approach to RC 11 or the athletic RC and alternate funding structures. Rich and Chris. Um, before we, I, I turn it over to you guys, again, I think I'll review and, and John and Julie jump in if, if I, um, if you want to add anything. But the question that was asked of administration, the two question. Why is this RC, um, increasing at the rate that it's increasing? Can you help us understand those numbers better, which is the first portion of the memo? And secondly, what do other districts do to fund their programs that's in any way different from what we do? Are there other solutions? We were particularly interested in, um, different ways of public-private partnership.
Um, so we'll start, um, in terms of like the five-year growth of the athletic budget. It is about five and a half percent. Uh, the Board of Ed's overall budget is about 3.2%, so slightly above, uh, the overall growth rate. There are, uh, four main drivers of the athletic budget, um, in no particular order. Um, rental costs for outside facilities, we do have rental costs for ice hockey, skiing, squash and diving. That has grown by about 7% over that time. Uh, coaching stipends, um, have grown by almost four and a half percent. And while that's not really the contractual increase in the coaching stipend, it is largely due to 10, 10 additional coaches that have been added, um, over the last five years. And they're usually added, uh, either due to Title IX issues or safety, uh, for students. Uh, supplies, we did throw in there even though it is a reduction when you factor in the deferral from the current year. Um, excluding that, it is a 3.3% uh, increase and that is largely due to the uniform replacement cycle. And then finally athletic transportation has an annual increase of about 6%. That really started post-COVID with the driver shortages throughout Connecticut. Um, and speaking to other districts, um, 6% is actually on the low side compared to a number of other districts. Um, people are still, districts are still having, uh, significant difficulty in getting, uh, buses for sporting events due to the driver shortage throughout Connecticut and really the, the country. Um, we did want to highlight some efficiencies over the last few years within athletics. We did contract out the athletic trainers. Um, we did eliminate a dedicated secretary in athletics. We do have the YMCA reciprocal agreement. And then we just started field advertising, um, at Darien High School as well. Um, we did offer her some interest, some information on cut and no cut, um, in student activity spending. Um, typically student activity spending is between $500, $600,000 a year. And that is anything from, uh, voluntary fees to fundraising. Um, and that is really largely to fund what's considered the nice to haves, whether it's filming costs, alternative uniforms, homecoming expenses, senior day expenses or paying for charter buses, uh, which are over and above the cost of a school bus. Uh, so we did look at what some other districts do throughout Fairfield County. Um, we've talked about this in the past, but some districts do charge participation fee. Um, they range it anywhere from $100 to $250, uh, below being Weston and Bethel at 100 and Monroe at 250. Um, some districts do allow their booster clubs to donate funds to pay for additional coaches. Uh, districts like Trumbull, Westport, Newtown, New Canaan and Easton-Rudding. Um, districts that do not allow similar to us, Greenwich, Fairfield and Danbury do not allow booster clubs to pay for athletic coaches. Um, so looking at options, um, some that we've talked about in the past and some that we haven't. Participation fees, we've already talked about in the past. That is the most common among the districts throughout Connecticut. Um, some districts do cut within all sports. We did look at what it would look like if we cut, um, had a practice of cutting, uh, student athletes. Uh, the estimate is about 117 student athletes, um, from last season would participate. And as a result, you wouldn't need as many coaches. Um, rental of facilities, um, some districts do look at having, if they don't have the facility on hand, having that 100% paid either by the boosters or the parents. Again, that's hockey, skiing, squash and diving. Uh, some districts don't fund non-CIAC sports. Uh, so for us, that's rugby, sailing, squash and skiing. Um, looking at this year's budget, that would be about $135,000. Uh, while no district, uh, we find has a cap on the number of coaches that they provide. We did, uh, hear from some that said it's kind of been like flown about as a potential option. So if you capped coaches at two per sport level, meaning two at freshman, two at JV and two at varsity, so six coaches in total. Uh, we did list the, the sports below where there would be a reduction. Um, and then that could be, um, offset by booster or outside donations as well. Um, any of those options obviously could be a barrier to entry, either financial barrier or a limit on opportunities for students if you have cuts as an example. And then we did want to highlight, um, potential budget increases for fiscal year 26. We do have the deferral of the uniform replacement cycle. So there is approximately $180,000 of pending, um, uniform replacements, uh, for fiscal year 26.
So before I open it to the, uh, board for, for a question or comment, just a few notes. Um, again, we as a board rejected the notion of participation fees twice last year because we were concerned about the impact to student participation. So thank you, Rich, and Alan for noting that in the memo that, um, high levels of student participation is, is a goal of this board. Um, um, one way or another. Um, secondly, the, that there is no, the administration not include any recommendations in this memo. This is just of, uh, simply factually what is out there. And that no action is being called for the board tonight. This is here for us to discuss so that we understand the universe of possibilities. What we can't continue to do is say this, this RC is growing at a quick, at a fast rate, but then not do anything about it. So either we decide we want to do something about it or we defend why it grows at the rate that it grows. Um, and we do that, um, with the information inside of this memo. Okay. With that, I'll open it to questions. Uh, Greg and then John.
Um, just a few questions. Uh, I guess the first one is, um, do we have numbers as it relates to participation in sports over the same period of time that you have the growth rate?
I think you do.
Well, we do. I think, um, I don't have exact number, but percentage wise, we're upwards of 80, 85% of our student athletes, of our students participate in at least one sport during high school.
But in, just in terms of the growth rate, so I know like, uh, the easiest comparison for me is like special education. Like I know that that, I think the growth rate in that is actually way higher than sports. Mm-hmm. But the reason for that is because enrollment has increased so much? So has, has participation increased to justify the growth?
I think it's part of the board packet. Every year we give out, um, it's a one pager with, has the, uh, the number of participants in each of the sports. Um, I think overall there's been a, an increase. Um, I'd have to refer back to that board packet, but I don't have the exact number. But yeah, there's been, there's been an increase, which I think is evidence here by we've asked for those additional coaches.
Okay. Yeah, I think that would be a good follow-up just in terms of getting that additional information. So we could actually see like maybe what's actually driving the increase versus just the dollar numbers. Um, and then, um, my second question was just in terms of the, the overall size of this RC, what is it as a percentage of the total budget?
Uh, so it's $2 million RC 11 and our budget for next year or this year now is 119 million. Um, so it's not a significant.
Okay. So less than 2%. Okay.
John, and then I see you, Evan.
Um, there was a memo based on some questions I asked, so can we get that posted, um, with it? But, you know, one of the points, well, first of all, like when you look at the main drivers and Rich talks about athletic transportation, that's a $362,500 line item for fiscal year 25. And then you look at the increase, it's one of the fastest growing sub, or I guess, um, lines in, within the RC. So that, that is a big driver. And Rich has called out transportation expenses going up. So I think, um, yeah, that's important to note. Um, to answer the question of a, uh, public comment earlier, Chris, if a student, the, the, the question of equity and equipment was, was raised. So as I've understood it, there's certain sports that, um, students or, or athletes like to carry around with them from public team, you know, Darien public schools to private.
Right.
Not every kid plays in a private venue. So can you just revisit that policy, hopefully for the last time in terms of providing equipment to students on an equitable basis?
Sure. I mean, the easy answer is anything that we provide to students we're collecting back, um, at the end of the season. Um, football, football helmets being an example, uh, hockey helmets, our students come to us with them. So, um, you know, where a student would certainly have one if needed, one of, most of, if not all of them come to us with a hockey helmet. They take that with them at the end of the season. So privately owned, they use in the off-season for their off-season training and, and teams and practices.
So to, again, as I've, I've heard this question asked too many times and I want to make it very clear. If a student doesn't have their own equipment, safety or otherwise, the district will provide that equipment to that student?
Absolutely.
Okay. Um, you know, one of the other concepts I raised in my question, well, I, I guess I'll go to, uh, the fourth question. Uh, why is there a policy that prohibits booster clubs from subsidizing coaches' stipends while we allow donations for many other athletic related items? So the answer that was given, there's title nine issues. But I guess Rich or, or Chris, in the districts that allow, like let's just take New Canaan, for example, that allows private donations to subsidize or endow or whatever you want to call it, coaches. I guess there's a way of managing around title nine issues.
Again, so in some cases you might have to turn down the donation as an example. So let's say, um, the booster club wanted to donate money for a boys soccer coach and that would create a title nine issue because you didn't have the same amount of coaches for girls soccer. You could just say, we can't accept the donation. Um, and that's essentially how you would have to manage it.
So you can manage it that way. Okay. And then the year to year. Okay. And then the year-to-year donation, again, we can manage around that again. You can't guarantee a donation and we don't want to, as a board, if we got a donation for an additional coach, wouldn't want to adopt then an increase in the budget years following. So there's a way to manage around that too.
So you, you would essentially fund the coaches that you felt were needed funding from the board's approach? And then if booster club gave you, let's say that soccer, those two soccer coaches as the example, in the following year's budget, you wouldn't budget for those two that were given. You'd go back to what you originally funded and if they chose to fund it again, then you'd either accept or deny them.
So and last question on this, is this a board policy or district policy or hiring policy?
So there are, there's a policy that you're not supposed to take a donation if it compounds your budget with future expenses going forward. So you would have to know to manage that. Student Activity Manual also does talk about not subsidizing, which isn't really a board policy. It's kind of like a form of a guideline subsidizing board operating costs. But I don't think it's anything necessarily that has to go through a policy committee, but it's how it's managed.
Okay, can I do one, my last one? Okay, so the, the last question, I raised the issue around sports camps over the summer and summer school. And clearly noting that this sits well outside the RC 11, it's, you said RC 23. But I, I just wanted to make the point that athletics goes beyond RC 11 in this district. And from what I understand, especially this year, the sports camps, if you will, that were offered, which I, I think there's like three pages long in the, in the summer school manual, generate a very large percentage of the, these, the summer, summer school fees. So it's interesting. I mean, a lot of people talk about the cost of the RC 11, but because we're so successful in our sports in this town, I would counter that, you know, RC 23 over the summer, even though, again, I don't want to co-mingle the funds, is hugely successful for this community. And this year, I think you said year-to-date, we'll go through this finance committee, almost $950,000 in revenue. Not all sports related. How much of that is sports?
So about $380,000 sports related of the 950. Sports are a big part of Darien Summer School, whether it's football or softball or wrestling. And it does contribute a lot every year.
Okay, thank you.
Follow-up?
Yes, please, Dave.
Thanks, Rich. You mentioned the model where the booster club will fund, and I appreciate the Title IX restriction there. Does anybody have a model where booster club will propose? And then if for whatever reason, then the school basically backstop is sort of a last resort?
So if I understand the question correctly, it's if the booster fails to raise the money for, let's say, a soccer coach, does the board backstop?
Yeah, I guess I'm just trying to think operationally from the dynamics of it. I mean, I like the idea of removing the preclusion of having boosters be able to do that. But if we had boosters who are willing to step up, they're willing to write a check and then for whatever reason they couldn't, then the district be able to step up and make sure that we have the appropriate level of coaching necessary, whether it be boys, girls or for safety reasons.
So the board would, in a case like that, the board would have to approve a tran, obviously have money identified within the budget. That's not allocated to something and then would have to approve a transfer. So I know in New Canaan as an example, every year the boosters go to the board within that sport. So they go to the fall and commit a certain dollar amount for X number of coaches. The board accepts that donation, they hire the coaches, they do the same thing right before the winter season. And then again, the same thing right before the spring season.
Got it. And if for whatever reason they fell down, the board would obviously, I mean, the district would obviously backstop that.
Providing that the board approved the transfer, it could identify the funds.
Understood. Thanks, Rich.
Robin.
I wanted to just highlight, and this is kind of along the lines of what Greg was mentioning, just the overall, the size of the athletics budget, so it's $2 million. But if you look at the actual spend over the past two years, we're actually 100,000 in actual spending this year, 100,000 down versus the prior year and only 40,000 higher than two years ago. The largest increase was due to the spending in year 2020. And I don't know what happened from that year to the, to the following year. It could be COVID-related potentially, I don't know. But I, I kind of feel like we are focusing in on this and saying that there's a 7% increase when in fact, we've actually decreased it in terms of actual spend. And it's only $40,000 over two years ago. And given that it's only 2% of our overall total school budget, I think that it, we might be well-served to identify other areas in our total budget where if we find efficiencies, we would get a greater bang for our buck, so to speak. I think that that might be something we might want to evaluate.
Thank you. Julie.
You. Just a couple of other kind of smaller questions, back to one that Greg touched on earlier. Just to, it was a question I had as well. And the main drivers of athletic budget increases where it talks about coaching stipends, it says that the coaches were added due to increased student participation. So I think, just to be clear, the idea is how many students were participating in athletics five years ago? How many are participating now and what is that percent growth? I think is what we were looking for, just so that we can compare those two things to one another. And then I appreciate the history of efficiencies. That's super helpful and I, I look forward to adding to that list of efficiencies where we can find them. I did want to add, I know we added a assistant athletic director, not that long ago, but I don't remember what year. When did, do anybody know that?
It was pre-my time, so it was over.
Before COVID.
So it was a while ago. Okay. And then just remind me, when we deferred the uniform replacement cycle, did we add this year to next year or did we shove the whole pit and kaputel back by year? That's what I thought we did and that's what that number is that we're looking at here. Okay, so something to think about. And then just kind of as a top line, I appreciate the exercise. I think it's helpful and useful. I don't, I don't look at this as a menu of options personally. I don't think several of these things are options at all. But I think it's helpful to, to be thinking about it. And I think it's important that all of the areas that we talk about, we talk about creatively and we think about them outside of the box. And I'm not just interested in what other districts are doing. I'm interested in what other industries are doing and what other ways there are to turn up efficiencies to try to make change in, you know, our increased expenses across the board. So this is just a focus on one of those areas. Thank you.
Okay, Greg.
Just two quick follow-ups. One is with respect to what Robin was saying, I agree completely. And I think that like we might want to think as a board, like of looking at like, what are our largest RCs and ranking RCs in terms of the size of them and doing the same exercise, like prioritizing the RCs that actually have the biggest bang for their buck and prioritizing those and going through the same exercise? If that makes sense? And then the other question was just a question for Rich. Are the, the numbers that we're looking at in terms of the, the funding, is that, that includes any revenue related to that? Is that correct?
Correct.
But it wouldn't include what John was referring to?
In terms of.
Kind of like indirect revenue that's tangentially related to.
No, only direct revenue RC 11.
Okay, all right, thanks.
Just one question, kind of nitpicky, but your, your memo to, to John's questions, you mentioned swimming and diving teams and then you wrote, the diving rentals are 12,000. Are there swimming rentals as well and, or is that bundled into that 12,000?
So we only paid for the rentals for diving. We do have a reciprocal agreement with the Y, so we're not paying for the Y for swimming and then they're not paying for our facilities.
Okay.
Just to follow up, so if you were to break out the cost equivalent for hours at the Y for swimming, do you have any idea what that number would be?
We did this when we started the agreement a while ago. I'd have to probably look back at it. We did end up having them pay us back for the custodial overtime, which the board bore that cost for a while and that was about $30,000.
Could you just get us that number?
Yep.
Thank you.
And, and sorry, this 12,000 is both boys and girls diving?
Correct.
Okay. Anything else on this? Alan, you want to say?
Yeah, some of this is, you know, are you able to or versus should you do some, something? Just a wee bit of color to something else that, like for instance, the Darien Foundation, when we kicked off the robotics, they actually funded the coaches as well. And then they transitioned out of that and the board assumed the fees for the coaches and they, and the board continued to fund some other aspects of robotics. But the foundation also continued to fund some. And so personally, just regarding the, the coaches, I know we're not per se on that. I'd prefer that the board maintain ownership of the coaches. And if you want to fund it through boosters or otherwise, I'll let that go to another allocation, I think, to the coaches. But that's, I'm getting too far down the line, but just a wee perspective.
Well, I think it raises an important point, which was you guys weren't really answering the question of what would you recommend?
Correct.
Right? So I think, in summary, I think, and somebody correct me if they disagree, but I think this board is saying, number one, we're not interested in cutting programs. Number two, we're not interested in impacting participation. Number three, we have heard the requests for equitable funding. Number four, we're interested in looking at whether there are options for how we fund these programs that make sense and thinking creatively about them. Doesn't mean that we've unearthed anything up to this point that we are necessarily interested in. But we are asking the question of how's, how are there other options for how the funding is structured? Is that an accurate summary of the conversation for everyone? Okay.
I mean, just say it another way, it provides a, a resource document come budget season. If we do have to dip into this RC, you know, different options that people might look at, but that's not signaling we should.
Okay. All right. Thank you all. Further discussion and possible action on Board of Education goals and strategic plan goals, strategies, actions for 24, 25.
So if I may, talk at a high level about some of these, I'll go, I'll do the board goals first of all. We, the administration took the feedback from the board and included it. So just, we'll, we'll do the board goals first of all. There were no key performance indicators to be part, included in the board goals. We did include, I'll go back and forth a wee bit, we did include a key performance indicator under teaching and learning in the strategic plan. That's what we thought that the board would like to see there. So on goal number one, we took out the KPI. We just added on the right-hand side, first paragraph, the second part of the first paragraph, which would be to monitor performance of all students, including achievement and growth data posted, data dashboard updated according to assessment timelines. So that's the only thing that's new on, on that particular goal. Do you want me to go through them quickly, goals and then, or pause?
No, let's pause at each one, please.
Okay.
And I have one comment on this, but does anybody else have one? Rich, this is for you. I think, I love where we're starting, or this is for Jenny. I love for where we're starting with, with looking at student achievement. I think that's a great place to build this out. And I, I thank the team of Robin, Greg and Dennis who took on kicking, kicking this off. I think the other area where it would be helpful to trial some new metrics, Rich, is under technology. We always talk about that at budget time, but we are often asked a lot of metrics related questions. So if we could be thinking about that ahead of time and we can talk about the right timeframe to get the information to the board. But maybe if Jeff at all can come up with some suggestions. But certainly we always ask questions about usage and efficacy. And I think that's another area we'd love to see some trialing. So I don't know if you need to add that in here in any way, but.
Chair of the board, Parag, if you want to.
Yeah, let's just add an action step is, is develop metrics for our tech spend. And our, our tech program. Okay. Does everyone agree with that?
Yes.
Okay. Okay.
Moving on to goal two, goal two was changed to the alignment of the strategic work. This was teaching and learning. We decided to focus on the board's alignment to the work. So what was added in here, under action steps, the last two action steps were, were added in, monitor the implementation of the five-day ELP program and monitor the impact of administrative redesign. And then on the evidence board review of ELP and administrative programming. That's under evidence, the last bullet. So the last two bullets on action steps and the last bullet on evidence were the changes.
Just, just one thing, going forward, it would be really helpful if we could, if there are new things or things that were changed, if that just could be noted to the extent that we're going through.
Yeah, I highlighted mine, I'm sitting here thinking it'd be a good idea to highlight yours, so.
Because it would be a lot easier just because we've made, you know, a lot of progress here, but I think it would be just helpful.
The changes weren't dramatic, dramatic, but yes, that's a fair point.
Thank you.
So again, the last two action steps and the last bullet under evidence. Okay.
Yes. Anyone else? Okay. Wait, sorry. Greg, do you want to add anything to this one about aligning our evaluation processes? We can work on the language, but I think that's where it belongs.
We talked about that, yeah, I think this is probably the right place.
Yes.
Just in terms of the, the board self-review, superintendent self-review and the strategic plan.
Yes.
Those three.
Is that in here currently?
No, so that's, we need to add that.
Yeah, this is probably where it belongs, the alignment of strategic work.
Yep. You want to work on the language or do you want us to work on the language?
Absolutely not.
Okay. Pardon?
I'll send you a bullet.
That's fine, yeah, there's something to work with there.
Okay. All right, anything else on this goal?
Just one, just one question, just in terms of the K through three literacy, the pilot to explore the resources. And I mean, you're showing evidence of selecting a resource. So just one question I have is that I would think that we would only select a resource if we think it's going to improve our program or improve it in some specific way as opposed to just spending money on a resource. And, and you know, and I, I hate to be pedantic here, but I mean, just in terms of like creating a, a goal where you're saying the Board of Ed is going to achieve this goal. And you know, if it's a $650,000 cost that will be added to the budget, ideally, I would hope that whatever that was would be a better option than what we currently have. And I know it's a state mandate and we have to do something, but I think it's just.
I think it's a good point. Will you send us a recommendation for the language? So we can update it according to what you're saying.
Well, I mean, I did kind of draft something just on action steps on the second bullet.
Yep.
Support the pilot to explore and identify K through literacy curricular resources. And I said with goal of improving reading fluency, vocabulary, grammar, or whatever the specific things were that the state identified that we apparently weren't doing.
Okay.
So I, you know, and I, because I don't want to spend money on something that isn't going to improve our K through three literacy programs. Hopefully what we're doing will, and I would think it would be, you know, because we don't want to waste everybody's time. But I, I think that that would be really important, especially in terms of justifying an additional expense in our budget.
Yes.
As we go through this process.
Yes, I think it's, I think it's a very good point to, to explicitly tie what we're trying to solve for. So you have what you need, Amy? Okay.
And, and just following up on that with KPIs and metrics in mind, ideally then the metrics and the KPIs are that you're improving your student learning in the area of English K through three literacy and the aspect scores would reflect that. And so again, tying everything back to measure, measurements and metrics that we can actually say, are we doing this well? And if not, what do we need to change?
Yes, thank you. Thank you. Okay. Goal three.
So goal three, you, we, you may remember talking about cutting and pacing that there was this particular goal. There was just, that was wrong for every period, right? So we've added just the two bullets on the right-hand side. They may not be that extensive, but we're happy to put in whatever we have to put in there. So basically we've got the, the new budget calendar and then I'm looking at it sort of timely, sort of, I put timely in because what happened this year going on for a long time wasn't ideal, right? So if we could do it in a timely manner to.
Yeah, well, leading up to the budget and then post the budget. I think timely is important. Any other comments or questions on this one? I think in some ways the name of it, it's actually a little bit different. I don't, it's alignment and strategic work is part of what we're doing, but we're really updating our fiscal 20-year six budget process. I quibble. Any other comments? I quibble. Any other comments? Okay. HHR.
Yeah, um, the the evidence on the right hand side, every time I I look at something with a fresh look at it, that sometimes it just doesn't sit. Um, that those two don't really sit with me as well as as I probably should have.
Agreed.
I would invite some other thought to that. We could, but it's not that complicated, really.
No, um.
Which you could say they might and you change it, but it's some time when you look at it.
I'll say I'll do that one.
Right, that that can be done. We can just reword that one.
That's okay.
Uh, so goal five, the only changes that were made here, bottom of page, bottom of the strategy, last bullet, streamline the work of the Board of Education subcommittees. Uh, there was a desire to put that in. That's put in. Uh, under evidence, the last two bullets, develop a Board of Education handbook. Improved accessibility content of Board of Education webpages. Uh, Julie, I think that's the one that you've been talking about for a wee bit of time. So those are the three changes that were made to this particular goal.
Just one question. The handbook, is that for purposes of like new members as part of the orientation? Is that the intent of that? Okay, okay.
Okay.
So as we roll into the strategic plan, um to with only one uh key performance indicator and and we added the glossary at the back. And we sort of re reordered um the ro- the the years again, if it was, you know, next this year, if this year was next year, we put that in order. Uh, so I can quickly speak to each of these. Enhancing teaching and learning goal one. There are no changes other than the order of when things happen. Oh, sorry. Can I just, can I come back to key performance indicators at the end? Because it only it only it only pertains to goal area one, if you wouldn't mind. Goal area two. Action, the second paragraph, we added students to the staff. Outline a wellness program for students and staff. The one, two, three, the fourth action timeline and evidence for for paragraph four, the fourth action. We kept this here instead of seven B. There was a discussion where to put this. Uh, we felt that under wellness as well, uh, the use of cell phones and so on and so forth was appropriate to keep it here. It can go anywhere really, but but we felt here. So that is the change to two A and two B. That's that's the change. Those are the changes.
Any questions on two? Then we'll come back to one. No? Okay.
Goal area three is easy because there are no changes.
Any questions on three? Okay.
Uh, goal area four, the only change in goal area four is four B. And it's the very last paragraph, the second part of the very last paragraph under evidence. So four B, bottom right hand corner, it says monitor and analyze time allocated for professional learning during this this school year for certified staff. So that was a request that came from the board to add, so that's where we added it. Other than that, that's that whole area.
Maybe under four A. We'll talk a little bit about teacher engagement. We've heard some conversation from teachers about wanting to be part of the decision making, whether it was in the in the budget process or in the it came up in complication as well. Um, is there something we could articulate in four A? I think teachers are in many ways a part of of decision making, but naming it as part of what we do.
Uh, well, you have a um you have an increased opportunity for teacher voice and professional learning opportunities. We mean, it's it's really named there.
Mm hmm. Okay.
Well, it is. It says a foster environment of teacher engagement rate of the staff.
Okay. All right, then maybe what we can do is just think about that evidence and whether there's something to add into evidence. Thank you.
Okay.
Anything else? Julie?
Or, sorry, I'm sorry.
Sorry.
Um, it kind of a general thought with the evidence across the board, um, but both for board goals and the the district goals is that in a lot of cases, it's evidence that something happened is what's listed. And then in other cases, it's evidence in the form of a review of a new program or a changed program or what have you. Um, and and I'm I'm fine with that combination of things, but they're very different exercises. And I just think as we work through the year and prepare for each of these milestones, it'll be important for the board to be prepared to like, what does success look like when we're going to evaluate the change to a five day ELP? Like, what are the measures that we were looking for when we put this in place?
Well.
Um, to have the conversation about the right things and be able to assess things productively and constructively. Um, so just kind of.
Jill, can I just build on that piece? I mean, I, on my copy, I added a right, a column to the right of evidence, which is basically metric. Metric or KPI, which is more of the numerical data that you would be measuring. And ideally, I'd love to see that on a year over year basis. I know we're doing this quarterly potentially, and that would be probably difficult to do, but um, the mile, the evidence, to me, it's more of a milestone potentially, like Julie was mentioning. And if you're doing it on a quarterly basis, and you had started to do this on the quarterly updates this past year, which I thought was really helpful, where you had kind of a red dot, a green dot, a yellow dot, and showed kind of milestones or things that had been done, which is more of like the project plan kind of a report, which I think would be really helpful as we get this going forward. And then as we start to build the metrics that would go along with those and, you know, again, starting just with goal number one, with teaching and learning, trying to get a better, you know, way of doing this in a way that's manageable to you. But like, to me, the evidence is more of an operational kind of a milestone that you've done versus the metric, which we also want to see, which is how are we measuring the success? And it's all part of it.
Yeah, when we get the dashboard, I think that's that's, yes, it's it's a good point. Because both are valid, um, right? Like, we want to see that the chimney got constructed, which is the milestone, but that it's functioning as we need it.
Right. And it's basically you take it off the list. That's the green light. You've done it. So it's helpful to see.
So that's something maybe to look at with the dashboard. Jill?
Yes. Sorry, one last real quick thing. I meant to say that I love the glossary. I love glossaries. You loved it. Thank you.
Good.
Uh, goal area, goal area five, we took out Aspen strategic uh strategic action and put it in goal area seven A. That was a reallocation question or where does it belong question. Other than that, other than tidying it up, it's as it was.
Okay.
Goal area six. Uh, we can, we added in Tokonik Middlesex and Darien High School, so we wanted to round out all three of those. And then we took out the energy conservation. Rightly or wrongly, we took that out because it was basically completed and we would continue to do that at HR as the buildings are completed.
Okay.
Goal area seven, um, consider implementing a new data management system. Action steps, the very bottom bottom one, that came from goal area five that we just talked about. The evidence came from goal area five also. And then goal area seven B, we added in a wee bit of the backend of technology. So we extended the very top, uh, sorry, the action step seven B. Development to accessible database systems for inventory, student management systems, report and equipment, teaching and learning. Um, and then evaluate those current systems and any recommendations for changes.
Mm hmm. Thank you.
Then the much talked about glossary. So if I may go back to goal area one. So here's where we um. So this is the the performance indicators. Um, uh, there was a small work group. If the board worked on this, if they want to comment on, um, very happy to do that. I want to thank them for their work. Um, this was the administration sort of take on some of the feedback. Um, uh, I think the the work that the committee members did did a very nice job. Um, I think they tried to narrow it down a wee bit. This is our take on narrowing it down a wee bit more. Um, and I'm happy to have discussions about where the the subgroup of committee uh, or what their their uh thought process is or differences are in this. Uh, so the theory behind this is we would ease into this with goal area one. And we looked at uh grade three, grade three being a real significant uh indicator in the child's ability to read and and future success. Uh, three, five, eight, eleven, we included eleven and twelve as the end of the uh school uh school experiences. So for S back, uh, science, SAT, AP, CLO, CLO literacy, graduation rates. And we included analysis of the sub subgroups and most specifically in special education and our multi language learners. Um, and we were looking at, we were looking at the growth opportunity, like what are the growth over time? Uh, there's, there are a few that, um, if the board members want to speak to a few other indicators that uh, we haven't listed here that possibly uh the board might want to consider. But I'm happy to defer to Mr. Grambling, Dennis or Robin at this point.
Which, and if there's some higher level discussion to have here, I'm happy to do that. But also if you three want to just take another, after having heard a little bit from Alan, ask some questions, if you also just want to review it again against what you did and see if there's any updates. It sounds like we have a few updates anyway. Because you might, it might take a minute to do some cross referencing.
Yes, of course. There, I mean, there's a couple of things here. If you want me to comment on on some of the things, I'm happy to do that.
Please do.
Um, just just to name just a wee couple of things. Um, I I'm not a big proponent of, I mean.
Can you, can you actually start with um what you put in and how it works so that we can see that translation and then talk about what's not in.
What would be in here?
Yeah.
Yes, well, I'd have to, so right, so we would have to play this out like just in very much detail, but if you were agreeing to this, you were looking at grade three performance over time uh for cohort and the growth of of the students. So we, there are metrics to show the growth of an individual and there's a metric to show the growth of cohorts uh at grade three for for language arts, mathematics, science.
Right.
That would be, that would be the, so the same thing for fifth grade, eighth grade, eleventh grade.
Right.
Twelfth grade over overtime. Uh, the science will go through grade eleven. Then obviously you have the SAT and AP for uh grade, grade twelve. So, but but you could also include grade ten, eleven and twelve for APs that have been covered over a student's uh whole high school experience. The CLO by literacy, I think, uh, we're somewhat familiar with with that. Graduation rates, there's also, you can also look out to public uh institutions of completion rates. Uh, we have some of that information that how long does it take someone to complete gradu- uh graduation from a secondary institution? Um, what that looks like. So we do have that information if you want to include that. But the analysis of the subgroups within the three, five, eight, eleven, twelve, we'd be looking at the subgroup performance, participation and performance of them.
Trying to pull up your email, Greg. I can't.
I'm happy to talk to a couple of other areas.
Yeah.
Mrs. Best's.
I just had a question because I'm not, I'm not sure that I'm totally following because obviously all of that data exists. So what is it we're saying we're going to do with it? How is, how is that different?
So essentially, we would be looking at this as um, I I I sort of use analogy of looking at the scoreboard every now and again, right? How are we doing in these particular areas for our 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 sub, subgroups? Are they advancing at the same level as as the other groups, right? Um, are our students making the growth and cohorts making the growth that we want to make them? You could also, you could also just against a particular metric of performance against a different uh performance group in in the dirt, for instance, if you want to say. I just don't want to be arbitrary about it. The danger of of any of this really, right, is just, it gets very complicated very quickly in terms of different people, different grade lack, different teachers, different, right? As long as it's looked at holistically and from a uh, a learning process together, um, that's the most helpful part to it.
So are we saying that we would be using this data to assess how co- how particular cohorts are tracking versus the general population?
Well, you'd also be, you would also, you'd be looking at and uh the subgroups, we we for the most part have, right, are special needs students. Um, and multi language learners. I mean, those will be the two subgroups predominantly that we would look at.
But is this about that or is this about the general population's performance?
That's included as part of this.
Okay.
It would be the general, all students are general education, right?
Right.
Uh, but then in addition, we would look at those two subgroups.
But the exercise is not specific to the subgroups. The exercise is about all the students.
Correct, totally all of us.
That's what I was trying to understand.
Dr. Edley, just I I think one of the focuses that we had talked about as a group was to show growth in student achievement.
Yes.
As the goal, which is what, you know, we're trying to kind of marry the strategic plan with how we evaluate ourselves. And and whether or not you set a specific metric goal for some of these is very questionable because we already are at a high level in many of the areas. And so just to kind of track how we're doing over time, I think is important. And by cohort, as you mentioned, you know, because we want to make sure that all levels of learners are showing growth or, you know, to kind of see if we're meeting their needs. And that's really the most important. It's not comparing ourselves versus New Canaan or Westport necessarily. It's ourselves versus how we did last year or two years ago by cohort, I think.
And I think the exercise here is to try and get some somewhat of a benchmark to start.
Greg?
Yeah, I was gonna say, just in terms of how like the information and summary that we shared and how that was adapted into this, I thi- I think I would have taken a little bit different tack. I see that you included the, within the board district goals, there's the entire thing about metrics and indicators of systematic performance. That's helpful. But then in this section, I think I agree with Robin where it should be a little bit higher level in terms of what's the goal we're trying to achieve, which is as we, as we mentioned earlier, marrying these things up, but what we're trying to marry up is the the growth and achievement with with restrictions, right? If you're number one in the state, you can't keep growing. You can't become like better than number one, right? So you have to set targets that are realistic and achievable, and some of those targets we're already achieving. So I think the idea is like to to create a set of metrics within this or a set of targets in terms of achievement for our students or for the district that um are identifiable, are measurable, that we can then look at historically to see trends and track going forward. And we need to figure out what the cadence of those are and how we're going to track them.
That that's good. Um, my interpretation of this is if if these are the things that you want to look at, then you write those around these. But if you don't agree with these in the first place, then I don't know if we can get the next level of specificity.
Okay.
Just, just a couple of other things that are, that uh came up in the discussion. Uh, I mean, state county championships and like state championships and I I I'm not really, I'll just be honest, I'm not really. I don't think those are things that that I would want to. Those are things that I respectfully have left off this list for the moment. Uh, tier one, tier two, tier three, uh, that's all regular education. And so it's not really special education.
Um, which is just a nomenclature. Just a second. Um, I I think that um we have something of a difficulty that we we named when we started this process, which was the goal area one is enhancing teaching and learning. And then what we're trying to do is marry looking at student achievement inside of teaching and learning because we were trying to figure out how to get this goal to also reflect student achievement. And I think that's the, a little bit of the push and pull that we have right now. Um, so the way this is written has a lot to do with the work of teachers and less to do of it with the look at students. So I think probably the best thing to ask you guys is to go back, look at it from the student lens. So I think probably the best thing to ask you guys is to go back, look at it from the student lens and see, well, that's one option. Another option is really what we're looking for is a dashboard that eventually ties back into here. The reason we're wanting to use this is so that we as a board and you as administrators, we've all agreed to a common set of metrics. So at some point, you know, something has to be listed out explicitly in here. You know, what's inside of this three, five, eight, nine and 12? So you're trying to get us to, are these the thresholds that we want to use? And are these the sources of information?
Correct.
Okay, all right. So that's the first thing. So the first question for the board is, do we want to do these thresholds? And do we want these sources of information? Is that responsive to the kind of set of information you're looking for? I would say actually maybe not, because I think what you're asking for is more expansive. So for example, when you talk about looking at tier one, two, three, that is how effective is our SRBI program? How quickly are people moving in and out? Are those students having the same success? Maybe with this forms of assessment or maybe with others, so.
Yeah, like if, if there's 20 students in tier one and 10 of them are supposed to be back to the general population within six months.
Yeah.
Did they make it?
Yeah.
Are we tracking that?
Yeah.
To see if we're actually being successful with the program that we're implementing.
Yeah.
Yeah, I agree with that. I'm just like, it's just the scope of the entry to it because we do a lot of this at, at different levels anyway. So it's just the scope of what you, you want to focus on as, as the sort of big indicators.
Yep.
Because otherwise we'll be reporting on, it just feels as if we're reporting on everything.
Okay, I think there's a gap between that and this, that we, I think we need your help to, to marry. And if we could do some work on that, leading up to the next meeting, then we could probably bring this to a close next meeting. Not, I, I think you were saying, what's the direction we're looking for? I think we're saying, yes, this is right directionally, but without seeing a little bit deeper, it's hard to know if it's effectively responsive. And I, I see you, Robin.
I guess, I mean, the reason that the SRBI is in there, you know, I think we were trying to figure out, okay, how, what, what are measures that you could use?
Yes.
For some of these cohorts.
Yes.
And SRBI, the tiers is one. Completion of IEP goals is another, because we're trying to, you know, some of this is operational metrics versus others, which is how are you measuring student learning growth? They're two different kinds of metrics or KPIs. But organizations use both because you want to measure your operational efficiency as well as are you achieving student learning growth? And I think we need to be doing both, especially as we're going through a budget process and we're trying to show efficiencies. Or we were trying to identify we're not efficient. And the metrics and KPIs are a very good operational way to flag that. And that's a red dot versus a green dot, because maybe we have a lot of inefficiencies in a certain area that we need to improve. And I know that's a lot, and we don't want to make this more of a, a heavy lift for the administration. Because the last thing you want to be doing is just generating reports.
Yeah.
Yeah, or the exercise was for you to look at all, like we have a big, long list. Look at those and tell us, these are all very easy to get. These are impossible, take those off. Now, the, these are, may take a little bit of work, but we can narrow it down within those different buckets.
Yep, Julie.
Did I miss the list?
Yes.
I feel like I don't know what we're talking about a little bit. And that's, that's part of the challenge I'm having right now too. Because the last discussion we had about achievement and success was the need to dimensionalize it and, and make sure that we're talking about these things in the same way. And I feel like this went in the wrong direction for where my head was from that. But it also seems like maybe we have a task force going that either we need to, the rest of us have brought up to speed on or brought into the conversation in some way.
Yes, that's correct.
That's, that's correct. Coming together.
Because it didn't happen. Yes, I agree. So, yes, so if we could. I, I think we need one more meeting with this group to get this goal in whatever form, whether it's a dashboard. And then there's something gets presented to the board so everybody's on the same page.
Well, the dashboard is part of the whole thing, but no matter what, whatever it is, we're choosing.
Understood. I just, I just think that in trying to reconstruct this, this evening, we're not going to get there this evening. So my suggestion would be that we table it, do some work. I don't think this is ready to go. Unless people disagree with me, are you guys ready to sign off on goal? Particularly you guys from that team. Are you ready to sign off on goal area one or do you want some more work? On dimensionalizing it?
I figure you'll probably do some more work.
Yeah, great. Okay.
Thank you.
Perfect. Okay, so we'll see that next meeting. All right, now we're moving on to the first reading of the board master agenda.
So we took, we took out things that were one time things that were in there that were one time shots and not, there were, you know, maybe you request a report or something. But we've tidied this up and put a wee bit of thought to it, particularly around the development of the budget of when things are going to happen, what processes are going to happen. I'll point out a couple of things. You have like October 22nd, update on the FY '26 budget initiatives. That will include all the areas that we talked about. What's the status of all of those? To start with, some of them might be, I haven't started yet, and other ones that may be fairly far along in the process. But instead of doing the separate presentations, we're giving an update on all of them. The status of, I think that's what the board had requested. I'm not going to go through all this, madam chair, unless you want me to, but.
I think we want to, staying on October 22nd, a couple of other changes that you've made in this master agenda are moving an additional fiscal year 26 budget forecast to that date. And also a presentation of the updated five year capital plan, both of which typically happened a little bit later. And then moving to November 12th. Those two things are to be inputs so that the Board of Education can give some guidance to the superintendent about the fiscal year 26 budget. It is my suggestion that the finance committee take up working with Rich on what a budget forecast looks like and a framework for providing some guidance, what that looks like, whether it's qualitative, quantitative, or a mix of both. And then come back to the board with a recommendation for what guidance looks like. So we're all on the same page, but that's a fairly significant change to how we've handled it. I also mentioned that Rich, that we did the year end already. So typically this was later on in the year, but we've now done the year end. So it doesn't appear in this agenda anywhere else. And, and then the last piece, Alan, is that you have built yourself a couple of placeholders for that, the update on the fiscal year 26.
Yes.
And even noting, for example, if you look at December 10th, update on fiscal year 26 budget initiatives and potential efficiencies, you did that also in November 26.
Correct, yes, that's right, yep.
Noting that as we are probably looking at another tight budgetary year, we're trying to bring forward that question of timing we raised earlier. We're trying to bring more things forward so that the board and the community have an opportunity to see what they are.
Well, in the same way that we're interested to see what the add on things may be. I don't want the things that we may be reducing to be a surprise either.
Yep. Understanding that we'll have to be very sensitive should people be affected at any point. Okay, this is just a first read, so, and I see your head, Greg. You know, we'll, we won't vote on this until next time. So please take some time to go through it and make sure that it's responsive to what you're looking for in terms of any potential agenda items and that you like the cadence. Greg, did you have a comment?
I just had a question. In November 12th, it's got the update on personal mobile device plan data. Is that the, it seems like that may be the first we hear about how that's going or have any update there? And is that, like, when you say data, what do you mean there?
So, so we're doing a survey in October and so on with community members, staff members, kids. So it'll be an evaluation of, of that, basically.
So is that more for the high school or?
No, that's more, that's, that's like, the, the high school, we would. We're doing the high school, we're kicking off the high school right away. Whether it comes in a November 12th, whether that date just coincides with that is, it could just coincide with that. But that was meant to be like an evaluation of kind of the fall, so to speak, of the implementation for PK through eight to start with. But it, it'll be close enough because we'll, I don't see us being much further out than November than bringing up a suggestion about the high school.
Yeah, I was just, I feel like we should have, maybe not from the community, but maybe, I don't know, feedback from
Yeah, we'll.
faculty way before that.
Correct, agreed.
Yeah, okay.
So we might hear something either via your report or something like that a little earlier. Is that what, is that what you're saying?
I'm saying you certainly hit the high school recommendation. We will, we certainly hear that more than just an update in a report. That'll be a formal recommendations of board discussion.
At some point, but it's not on here because we don't have a date yet.
Yep.
Okay. Julie, just because you asked me to bring it up again, because it probably made more sense here. The October 22nd meeting, the presentation of student distribution class size reports for the high school and middle sex. I, I know I would like to get a good read from that on how things are shaking out with the revised number of teams and teachers teaching more classes, et cetera. So I look forward to that being pretty robust.
Julie, are you saying that, that just to, to make it for the, the middle school as well? Is that what you said?
Well, it says it's both high school and middle school. I just, just, we, we get that report every year, but I will be looking at it in greater detail than maybe I have in the past, just because we're, we've made changes this year.
Of course, yeah, that's fine, yeah.
As the year has started, how that has worked out, so to speak.
Are you looking, I think through the lens of class size is one way to look at it. Are you looking at, there's other changes we made. We have a new administrative structure. We have, yeah, four to five, we have a different team structure. We have some more interventionist support. Would you like something a little bit more comprehensive?
Please say no.
I too, I, I think the team structure piece will be evident in the class size structure. I would like to understand rainbow students, rainbow teachers, any, any any of those that have come with the changes at the middle school and that the numbers of teams and the sizes of teams.
Okay.
But yeah, I wasn't really talking here about any administrative changes at that presentation. Thank you though.
Okay, so student distribution class size and then also team, sort of how that looks numerically. Okay. Okay.
Just an observation, September 24th, it doesn't look like there's a lot of stuff in there.
That is true. Okay, we'll take a look at that. Thank you. Robin.
I, I'm just looking, so the November 26th is the special education update, the annual update. Would it be possible to have that a little bit earlier? Just because it is also a large area that has a lot of detail. I mean, it's right before the budget season, it just, I don't know. I don't even know if it's possible, because we do have a pretty packed agenda here on the other times, but.
I believe we spoke about last year, the reason we asked for that extension to November 26th is precisely for that reason, to give us time to look at some outcomes, to look, to get prepared for the budget. That's why we asked for a little more time.
Okay. So Alan, can we just add to the bottom a TBD on the high school tech policy? Just that way we don't lose it. Please.
Yep, I got it. Thank you.
All right, we'll see that again next meeting. All right, thank you for the feedback. Appointment of an impartial hearing officer for student disciplinary matters, expulsion and expungement requests and for hearing school accommodations appeals, including transportation's appeals as provided by statute for the 2024, 2025 school year as they arise. Dr. Edley.
So this is an annual process we go through of the board, of new members of the board or otherwise. I wonder what, what is this? It just, it is an appointment, as it says, of an independent impartial hearing officer. He, in this case, is Stephen Sidore, he has been doing it now ever since, I've been here for the last six years. And he serves not, he doesn't serve for, for the Board of Education. He's just an impartial hearing officer. It, it replaces the board's role and actually takes you out of the middle of, of some of these. Anything from transportation appeals to student disciplinary matters. So our representation still would be Shipman and Goodman. The parents would have their representation and Stephen would, would act in parentheses for the Board of Education. We have used Stephen for advice. We've nearly used him a couple of times for appeals. Fortunately, when we get down, get so far down the line, that hasn't happened. But it certainly can happen and discipline can happen as well. So he served us well for counsel and otherwise in this capacity thus far.
Are there any questions about that? Okay, with that, may I have a motion to appoint attorney Stephen M. Sidore as the impartial hearing officer? Sorry, did you have a question, Sarah? Oh, thank you. For student disciplinary matters, expulsion, expungement requests and for hearing school accommodations appeals, including transportation's appeals as provided by statute for the 2024, 2025 school year as they arise.
So moved.
Thank you. That is Dave, seconded by Julie. All those in favor? That's unanimous. Thank you very much. Okay. Approval of the superintendent's contract. Okay, that was sent out on Monday. We are extending, the, the motion is to extend Alan's contract by an additional year for a total of three years with a 3% salary increase. May I have a motion to approve the contract between the Board of Education and the Superintendent of Schools? That is John, seconded by Sarah. All those in favor? Okay, that is Robin, Jill, John, Dennis, Julie, all those opposed. That is Greg, all those abstaining.
Opposed.
Okay, and that was Dave for opposed. Okay. Okay, thank you all. Alan, here is to another successful school year. Thank you.
Thank you, members of board. Thank you.
Okay, personnel report, March.
So the only thing I would like to highlight is you notice that we've been able to fill many of our new paraprofessional positions despite the new contracts. So we are still competitive. And I think Danny Powers, our transportation coordinator deserves a shout out because while other districts struggle to find drivers, we're fully staffed.
Okay. Thank you to Danny for sure, especially with all the new buses. Okay, any other questions or comments? That will move to follow up action items. Okay. The first one was we're looking for a change in the, or the, an understanding of historical participation rates in athletics from Rich. And then we want the Y agreement numbers that you developed a couple of years ago. You'll just send those by email to the board, please. There are a couple of updates to the board goals, most, most of which sit with administration. But Greg, you're providing new language on the alignment and I'm providing some language for the HHR goal. Okay, on the strategic plan or district goals, the task force is going to sit with Alan and Amy, just knock out, and Shirley, and just knock out goal area one and how that looks, what belongs in the strat plan, what's the dashboard that sits alongside of it? And how that. And they'll have something for the board to look at next meeting. Okay, thank you. Other than that, there were some small changes. I don't have any other action items in my notes. Did I miss anything? Thank you. And the finance committee will look at guidance and forecasting.
Just one question. The, the Board of Finance was talking about potentially giving a, trying to give us guidance in October.
Yes.
And I noticed that on our master potential agenda here, we would not get our budget forecast for 26 until the October 22nd meeting, I believe. So just in terms of trying to make sure that all parties are aware of the forces that are driving the forecast. I think, I, I don't know how this works because obviously this is a new timing for everybody.
It is new for everybody. It's a very good question. Thank you for raising it. I think what they're planning to do is to look at, based on what I heard them say in their meeting, which if you haven't watched that meeting, please do, board members. They are planning to look at the grand list, the size of the reserves and to put forward and then the various, what they know of the capital planning to date. Because of course we have a rolling five year plan. They are planning to put something together that actually will probably serve as an input for us. And then we, when internally. And then we, when, in turn, when we give our guidance to the superintendent, we can also share, you know, with the Board of Finance where we are. That's the way, based on what they have discussed so far and what we have discussed so far, it would look. I think we need to acknowledge that, um, you know, it may be something of a work in progress. But that's what they're talking about doing on their end. So the good news about them, if they are able to get that done in their October meeting, it is just before our October 22nd. But you are certainly correct that they would not have our forecast. And Rich, our correct, because of when we finalize all of our enrollment, et cetera, end of October is our correct time, no?
Yeah, I mean, the earlier you do it, the less data you have to make a informed forecast. So we, we still have staffing to complete and that's going to affect it. There's still special education placements that have to be done. That'll affect it and enrollment as well.
So this is as early as you would go?
I think so. Yep.
Okay. Okay. So that's something that the finance committee will need to talk about. Julie?
I had an action item reminder.
Yes, thank you.
Relevant for now. We had talked in July about, um, committees, when they meet for the first time, reviewing the committee meeting schedule and deciding if you think it is more than you're going to need or if there are dates that your committee can maybe take off just to manage. I like, I like your term, the cadence of the meetings. So as committees get started next week.
Yes.
For the agendas.
Yes, thank you. So if that can go on all the agendas for the subcommittees, please.
Except finance.
Except finance.
If you want.
You're stuck. Thank you, Julie. Okay. Any other comments on action items?
Well, Robin, would you have a follow-up on the, so you had a brief?
I, the only, the only other thing that's kind of in conjunction with that is that we have a number of items on the master agenda here about talking about potential budget initiatives.
Yes.
And, you know, obviously all of that potentially is tied into the Board of Finance guidance, which, you know, and so, I mean, there are a lot of moving parts here. And in fairness to everyone who's talking about the potential budget initiatives.
Right.
I do want to make sure that we're able to give a, an impartial hearing to the potential initiatives and what we might need to be considering as part of our budget process. So again, this is all a little bit of a new kind of a system, so.
It is. We have to take the Board of Finance guidance for what it is. It's not, you know, we have our role, they have their role. It's going to be helpful in creating some parameters for us as we develop our budget. And we certainly are mandated to list that guidance. And I hope there's enough flexibility in that guidance, which we may be able to make informed kind of judgments as we build our budget. But we certainly won't follow it. Although I would recommend that we don't record.
But I think that's something to take up in finance, um, and, and kick around pretty heavily and come back with, because you guys meet in about five minutes, right? Rich, you're excited for this conversation with you. Okay. Um, okay. Anything else on action items? All right. With that, may I have a motion to adjourn? Julie, seconded. Yes, Dan?
Did you have public?
Oh, public comment? I'm good tonight. Sticking to everything. Hold a comment. Thank you, Dennis.
Good evening. If anybody in person would like to participate in public comment, please approach the podium and wait for the chair to recognize you. If anyone online would like to participate in public comment, please use the raised hand icon. Please state your name and address for the record and you will have up to three minutes to comment. Ms. McNamara, I see you have a raised hand. You have been recognized.
I'm getting there. Thank you all. And I appreciate listening to your comments on the discussion on RC 11. I have four comments. One, I would still hope to hear more clarification regarding the district's funding of off-site activities and sports. Specifically, why is the district paying for boys and girls diving? I still have not heard an answer to that. I don't expect answers now that this is not the forum, but I think every parent who participates in an off-campus sport would like to understand that. Second point, back with the why. I appreciate that you're going to be looking for more clarification in information about that agreement, but for, but it sounds like the people who are benefiting from that contract are the swim parents. And the why? I'd like to understand how this agreement is benefiting the Darian taxpayers who are supporting your budget. Three, based upon the comment of one of the board members there, I just want to make sure I have this clear. I'm the parent of an ice hockey captain and a lacrosse captain. Is it clear that protective equipment will be supplied to ice hockey players if they request it? Perhaps we can follow up with Mr. Banfredonia, but that is what I heard. So I want to make sure I have that straight for the Ben's Ice Hockey Team. And four, um, separate topic, there was a lot of discussion regarding task force. Julie, you were mentioning it there. I was getting a little lost myself. I just want to make sure that I, you know, are these task force on your website with agendas and minutes posted? So I just wanted to clarify on that point. And thank you very much for your time.
Thank you.
Ms. McCray, you are recognized. Please state your name and address for the record and please note you have three minutes to speak.
Thank you. Ailee McCray, 69 Cedric Avenue. Um, I've very much enjoyed listening to your conversation and I appreciate the opportunity to speak a little further. I've heard a lot about growth in participation of extracurricular or sports programs. Just to be very clear, what I am trying to propose a change for is the structure of the chamber music honors music program and that every student should be able to follow their pathway of music through the high school. Due to scheduling changes, I'm hearing of more and more students and we don't have any data. I'm sure the guidance counselors who are very aware of the schedules are conflicted of what to do, but students are dropping music because of their only possibility of staying in concert orchestra and not being selected for the higher level of chamber orchestra, which is the honors program. There are many, many students on a waitlist who have been told they are of the level and deserving of that pathway. And why, when we are building the programs through elementary and through middle school, are we still having students on a waitlist? And students are giving up that pathway and their passion. And for my daughter in particular, it has been all about social and emotional well-being, which in this town is just so, so important. So it's not just about giving kids the opportunity for their GPA and their credit and the potential. This is something which doesn't just impact my daughter. It impacts many, many children in this town. And unfortunately, most people don't advocate for music. They're just told, this is the choice you have to make. This subject or this subject. And years and years of dedication and hard work are just disappearing. It's so sad. Why is music treated differently? It's being compared to a varsity sport. Varsity sports are not credit bearing and they don't, um, music should not be compared to that. It's a crucial part of our core education. And when chamber orchestra only has six seats for cello, this year only opening up one seat for the whole of the high school to join the honors program. And we look at how many kids are playing in elementary and middle school. We are not being flexible enough. We should be adding an extra chair if there's a year with exceptional players. We should be adding two chairs. And why is the waitlist so long? I'm a professional musician. I don't understand the reasons that I'm being given by the head of the district, by Ms. Minnis.